Came to get him, get him. We have three dogs.
Dogs?
All that sporty mom. Comes into the house and sleeps on our couch till five in the morning.
I can't, I can't believe it. He used my chainsaw too. I completely went in the garage up here, that's all we'd understand. Using the chainsaw. First I thought somebody.
That I didn't know did it.
Good morning, everybody. It's eight fifteen. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Before we start the meeting, I'd like Saul to just take a moment of prayer and reflection to honor the and pray for the healing of those families that have suffered loss in Fargo for the loss of that police officer's life and those families that are dealing with the aftermath of the terrible and senseless act of violence. Thank you. Keep those families in your prayers. Starting out with the agenda confirmation. Administrator Omen informed me that Bruce Kimmel is not going to be able to be with us today due to some unforeseen accidents. So does the board wish for him to come on the August meeting? Is that?
Yep.
I'd be in favor of that.
Okay, so he will be so remove under number three. Anything else to add? Okay. Excuse me. With that, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, motion by Erica.
Second.
John, second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Minutes. Any corrections, additions, deletions?
On page two oh four. Number under Commissioner, under County Administrator report. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight bullets down where it says benchmarking a consent agenda or committee of the whole. I think it should say and/or. Does that make sense? So consent agenda and and/or committee of the whole meeting. Cause you, yeah. And then number to go down to human services. Number two under human service or human resources, I'm sorry. Motion and sec- number two, motion second to update the work from home policy to allow up to five days with department head approval, up to five days per week. With department head approval. And then under sheriff, number one. Just doesn't make it like motion and second to approve resolution, then temporarily temp- personnel request temporary traffic control for WeFest reimbursed by WeFest. There's something there that doesn't, doesn't.
He goes add.
Add something.
Maybe temporary traffic control personnel for WeFest.
Yeah, there you go.
For WeFest, which will be reimbursed by WeFest.
Yes.
Personnel, whether licensed or non-licensed.
Yeah, that's all I had, I saw.
On that same page, number two or number three, motion second to approve the education assistance plan. Five hundred twenty. Where did I have motion?
Was it number four?
Well, number four, I had motion second to approve the county being certified as training organization.
I had that one too, skipped over that.
But I had one on, oh, link the time, motion second to approve. I had the same one as number two for you. Link the time for the five days. And then under planning and zoning, do you need to put down that Kyle Barber was remote on that or?
That might not be bad idea, Commissioner, if they have that.
Otherwise, any other? Anything else? Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Motion by Erica, second by Dave, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Conform? Nobody? Reports and correspondence? I had a couple, it was pretty kind of a slow weeks. Went to the benefits committee with Erica, that's coming up before us. Had a kind of a call with sunny, for Sunnyside with Chris and we were working through and I contacted Dave, working through some of the transition for the administrator to the transition job description and benefits and how we switching from Acumen to Mini Waska. Also sheriff, we discussed some things, most of it's on the agenda. I think, I think one of the biggest things of points of concern, I think that the sheriff brought up was the public or the impound facility that we want to move forward on. So I think we're going to have to, I suggested to him and that maybe we look at using that, utilizing the transit building for some of your storage, at least temporarily. I know that won't be any secure, that's not secure, but at least might be able to house some stuff and I don't know logistically if we can use that or not. But I think the urgency for that, that structure is getting to a point where we have to, we have to either. I think John's been working on, on some, some design builds and, but I don't know, it's, we're going to have to figure out what.
Kind of put her down on hold for now until we really get good direction and we can continue working that way. But I think that'd be the best of some type of design build, which not on county buildings in the past and save quite a bit of money at them.
What, what are we waiting for?
Just more of a go ahead.
Could I offer something, Commissioner Nelson?
Go ahead.
I think the one, I think the thing that needs to be addressed, the design build, Commissioner Oken is correctly, is not a difficult thing to do or move forward with. I think the, the question is, and I brought this up at sheriff committee as well as one, the cost, how are we going to fund that? And I think we have some solutions to, that I actually be discovering, discussing as part of the legislative funding. But also, how does the impound lot fit into the long-term plans of the sheriff and what the sheriff would like to see on the jail campus? And I think it had been discussed at the sheriff committee about the idea of doing some architectural design of that whole campus. I mean, long-term where the EOC can be, where the jail can, not the jail, where the impound lot could be, where the sheriff's office could be. And certainly the decision was made some time ago not to, to do anything but at jail on that campus, but it might be worth having that discussion and making that investment. So that we can make an efficient decision and we're not, we're getting things years down the road about whether we should have done that or not. So I think there's just a lot of things that are part of that component and, and there's a lot of other space issues that as the chess pieces move around, there are other options for other departments and trying to downsize the number of buildings we have. We have what I call eight campuses, we have eight different buildings and campuses, and I feel we could get those down to like four. And I think there's some real efficiencies there. So I just want to offer that to the board and on things that have been discussed concurrently to the specifically just the impound lot.
Well, the impound lot has, has had a footprint on the jail campus since we've designed it. So I don't know why we, what, there's no, there's nothing holding us back there.
No, and that would be located pretty much south of all the driveways too. So it's kind of a setback on its own. I can move forward and have a few more meetings and see if we can get something going. Administrator sit in on that, so.
Well, I think, I think maybe we look at working through our county attorney to make sure how, how we present that to get it, to do it. You know, make sure it's legal, legal to go like that because we're trying to avoid architect fees because it's basically a big storage building with the, you know, secure storage.
Designed and spec, so anybody, company can build it, it's just working with individuals and get a good materialist, it's generic and.
I've heard the price of steel is coming down and, and some of the products are coming down. So I don't know if the, I don't know if the bids are going to be any more reasonable, but at least some of the materials have come down in price than last year.
Labor is going higher.
Yeah. Any other reports?
I had, sorry, on, on seventh of July was the grand opening for the museum, mainly the history area of the museum, but basically the, was the whole museum. It went really well, there was a lot of people there. I want to say there's probably two hundred people there probably. It was, it was, I'm sure that there's probably written it right up in the paper too, I haven't noticed. But anyway, also I just wanted to remind everybody too that in September is going to be the Da Vinci exhibit, which is for, and I'm a history buff, so it's pretty cool to me to see that. Anyway, I'll stop on that. And then fair board, basically we got a fair board meeting on Monday and they're finalizing everything to get ready for the fair. The fair will be the July twenty-sixth and twenty-ninth. The one thing they are short of right now is someone to work in the office, which is the main office, which is in the, kind of in the middle of the midway area, not midway area, but by the big tent. They need someone to work from three to ten PM, all four of those days, and they'll pay fifteen dollars an hour. And basically what that person does, they answer the phone, they sell parking permits, they radio people that their people are looking for. So it's, it's an easy job to do, it's just somebody that they, they, they had a lady that's done it a number of years in the past and, and another guy too, and they both are not doing it this year, so they need to find someone else. I'll let you do human services.
Yeah, we had human services, most of what we talked about is on the agenda. We did talk a little bit about the work from home policy and how to, to move forward with that and some questions on that. I also had the Northwest Emergency Communication Board, I attended for John as alternate. Discussion there was there was, there's been a lot of accidental nine-one-one calls in the, in the region, primarily Beltrami County was the one that had talked about, they had thirty calls in, in a one twelve-hour shift of accidental calls. And it has to do something with the phones. So they're working with Samsung and Androids. Were they automatic, automatically called? One was an incident where somebody had dropped their phone and it reported it as an accident. So, and then just of course the retention of workers in, especially dispatch has, has been a key thing. I think that's all I got.
I got one thing on the joint, we had joint govern- government, government, governance, I can't say, governance meeting, wow. You go to school for a long time, you can't talk. And anyway, one thing that the, that is a big deal for small businesses is there's been some new employment law updates that are going to go into effect in two thousand and twenty-three. And they are all, so the Chamber of Commerce on August tenth is going to have a informational training for anybody that's interested in that. It'd be from nine to ten. If you're interested in that, you should get ahold of the Chamber of Commerce, you can, or you can register online on their website. There's a lot of things that are changing and I own a small business, so I know about all these things and that's a big deal. And if you don't do some of these things, you get in trouble. So there, there's other things that happen in the.
Is the chamber putting on it, yes, they are putting on that at, was that August?
It's August tenth.
So if you're a small business owner, you should try to attend, is there an online?
There, there's an online registration.
But I mean, is there?
It's an in-person meeting.
Teams meeting?
I don't think so.
Will you record it? Because there are, it is significant changes this year.
It's significant, yeah. It's at Becker County Museum Conference Room, which is on the, on the main floor.
All right.
I had a few comments to, Richard and I had highway and that fracking materials on the agenda, but then were we going to discuss my notes for forward to board discussion on McGoff's valid engineering additional charges?
Is that under highway?
No, I don't believe it's under there.
McGoff contract, construction services.
Okay, it's on there. And I thank Jim and Angie and the crew over there for getting the annual report out and glanced through it, it looks pretty good and get that submitted to the state so we can finalize some state funding that's withheld until that's ends. I tend this crazy city council meeting and more or less get an update on the Eagle Lake access park. The Eagle Lake Association is buying it, there's some quiet title action that's going to take place. And their plans is to have it paid off in three years or less, and then they'd like to turn it back to the county or on it. So that's their long-range goal. But I kind of told the city or the mayor, I said, if things go south on that, let the county know and let's see if we can do.
So will it continue to be open for public swimming then, all this time?
Yeah. That's their plans. Now, once we get the boundaries and the titles parted away, we'll see where it goes.
I think maybe we should, maybe Steve, if Steve or is listening or Mitch, maybe we should just have a discussion at NRM two and, and see where we can, where we fit in then in the long term of that.
We briefly talked about it at the Recreation Advantage Committee.
Yeah.
About those two guys looking at it.
That's all I have.
Okay.
I just had highway with John and just, they are finishing landscaping out there now and they're seeding and I guess they've got trees coming, but then I seen, I was up by there yesterday and they have got it all raked out nice and, and it's really starting to look good over there now.
And just add to that for online auction is ongoing and closes the twenty-fourth. So a lot of good items there, Jerry, you could use a lot, get on there and.
Yeah, Glenn, look at that auction. Stuff for you there.
Okay, the only other report I did go down to the, the special hearing at, for Buffalo Red Watershed about the Hay Creek subdivision. Mary informed me, I, we did speak against it, handed it, they did explain it a little bit better. The letter that they sent out was very, it wasn't very ac- or it was accurate, but it wasn't very detailed to give you the full idea. So they are going to be taxing Watershed for maintenance. It's a two-mile stretch and they said up to thirty-five thousand dollars or two dollars and fifty-eight cents per acre. But they said they don't plan on taxing that much, that's in case they ever need to tax, you know, in the far future. Well, you know, if there's a major, I said, if there's a major, if there's a major thing, you're going to have to get some special funding from, you know, some grant monies because you can't ask a little water, a little sub watershed to. And my point, and I don't know, I know some of the people heard it at the board that, you know, this, the reduction goal is for county or for watershed-wide reduction of your, for flood control. So you shouldn't, you shouldn't make a small sub watershed, be paying for maintenance of your structure that you're, I'm using. But so anyway, they, they said they were only going to be assessing fifteen thousand dollars to that tax up to the thirty-five, which they've been average spending eighty-five hundred. And they said most of that's beaver control, so those little beavers are quite, quite bothersome. So anyway, it, it made me feel a little bit more, you know, if it's a dollar an acre, it's not as bad as two fifty-eight. That gets, I mean, that starts adding up real fast, even a dollar's a lot for, for beaver control. But so we did, did present that and were heard. Mary said they called her, so they did approve it. I don't know if they approved the full thirty-five or something less, but I guess we'll find out when the minutes come on. Yeah. So, any other reports, correspondence? Pat, maybe we'll take this correspondence for the county joint, county government two oh one held in Park Event Center in Wake Park, August third, nine to three-thirty. That's for commissioners that wish to attend. Entertain a motion to authorize any commissioner wants to go to go with premium expenses. Motion by John, I'll, I'll second. So if you could, if you plan on going, coordinate with the office here to, to do that for you. I, I probably will not be, Richard, are you?
Yeah, but we'll see.
So that's a definite no? John, I mean, let them know if you are, but if, if, when we order on this, everyone will be allowed to go. Did I vote, do all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm sure it'll be, I'm sure it'll be a good one. Any appointments? I know I have an appointment on the rec committee yet. Are other appointments filled up, do we know?
You haven't phoned anybody yet?
No, I have, I'm going to ask someone that I hope will take it.
We need, we need that large one too.
I know I got a call from Phil Hanson, he was going to try to think of someone at large too, that, there's a lot of, a lot of good projects that we can move forward within the rack, so. We got to get active or, or it's not benefiting. All right, County Administrator.
Yeah, one thing that just came out of highway committee that we didn't, we have an ask here for the board, as you've taken a tour of the area, there's a lunchroom there and there's, there's spots to, to have monitors installed. And the recommendation from the highway engineer was, there was a, there was some real cost-effective monitors that were available at Costco. And the question was, is could we secure a business account there? That would be a form of financing, which would need board approval. And I wanted to get some board feedback and we'll, we can bring it back at a future agenda item, but we wanted to know if we have your support to follow that application process and get a, essentially a corporate account at Costco for this and other things.
What is the cost? I mean, what is the cost of the membership for corporate?
Yeah, well, we wanted to first see if we're on the right track with you, we'll bring it back to you on August first with the information. I don't, I used to be a Costco member, I can, I can only tell you what it is for a single, an individual, but.
I just, I just don't, I don't like us going to Fargo to spend money on Minnesota projects myself, but if there's some, if there's something particular, do a one-time, I wouldn't be in. But I'm not really that in much in favor of becoming a Costco member as a county, unless there's something, some great cost savings somewhere.
They didn't have much for TVs here though. They, they look, they look locally in there.
You'd have to go to like Walmart or something like that here.
Yeah, well, that's not really local though, I mean, kinda it is.
Well, the prop, the, the sales tax goes to Becker County, not to.
Yeah, that's, that's one thing that's beneficial.
No, but sometimes Costco, you can save a lot of money, I like that idea, you know, if, and they're.
I think you can save money, but do you save enough money to pay for your member, are, would we use it enough and save?
Membership mileage.
Yeah, and I don't know what the membership costs, but the warranty was a lot better on most, there was like a couple extra, so there, there is, there is a reason people do it and I like to spend money locally too, but sometimes the availability of.
Well, what I would suggest, what I would suggest is put together a cost, a cost analysis of your purchases and, and include the cost of the membership, the cost of the time and mileage or freight, if you're going to have them shipped versus the same, same ones over at Walmart, because.
Usually Costco ships direct free.
Well, that's what I mean, if it's shipped, then that's fine, but.
Then, no, I would suggest that too, find out what the membership would be and see what we're actually looking for purchases.
If it, I mean, I don't have a problem if it saves you five hundred dollars on a one-time purchase, but I just, I just don't think it's, I don't think it's wise for us to run up to Costco to, to buying
Like getting the sales tax.
Everyday supplies, it's not going to.
Another option too, if you order online, you're not ordering it from a local business, but the sales tax does come back to the county.
That's a good point. We'll bring something to you, Commissioner Nelson will bring something to you for August first. And I'll continue with my report. So as was mentioned, a joint governance meeting, I think the one thing I, I've heard clearly from a number of the stakeholders at the meeting is the need of affordable housing that was brought up quite a bit. And I'd remind the board, and I know you know this, and especially the board that's sitting in the EDA, is we have a housing subcommittee specifically focused on trying to develop housing in the county. Did some benchmarking, as I mentioned, I would at the last board meeting on a few different areas of what other counties are doing. The committee of the whole consent agenda, capital improvement plan and board packets. We'll just start with the committee of the whole and, and what that is, just as the board knows and perhaps the public knows as well, is that is an informal meeting of the board for you to make decisions on whether things should go on the agenda or not. So it allows you to vet things, departments will bring grants or projects to you, you would endorse it and say, put this on the agenda or not. Certainly if the board's not supportive of it, it will never get on the agenda to begin with. Most committee of the holes are just five-member boards, but some counties have the department heads as voting members as well. But there's no decision-making role, the only decision is whether it will go on the agenda or not, the board then decides whether to approve it. And we did some benchmarking out of eighty-seven counties that use a committee of the whole approach, out of eighty-seven counties, four did not respond, but forty-six out of eighty-seven counties use a committee of the whole format. And, and the, one of the positive results is that when you do get to the board, although there might still be some discussion, you will have vetted things out through the committee of the whole and, and you can assign it and approve it rather quickly, makes board meetings more efficient. But, but it's just an idea, we wanted to let you know what other counties are doing and as I indicated, forty-six are, are using a committee of the whole format.
Of those forty-six, what like size Ryan, size range of counties are they? Are your, are your bigger counties, medium, smaller?
It's a great question, it, you see more medium to more smaller counties, Becker County-sized counties using a committee of the whole, but there's a couple larger counties that do it as well. It just depends on what the county board thinks is important. And keep in mind, committees also can play a role. In, in this case, we have a committee approach where things go through a committee structure and then go to the board. You could eliminate committees, but you could also define committees more on what committees are going to do. Maybe they take a more in-depth look at in the future budgets and other technical things that they're working on, more research and development kind of things. So this was just an. uh, they're working on more research and development kind of things. So this was just an idea and we wanted you to have the information and, see if the board wanted us to gather anything more relating to committee of the whole.
I think, I think when we have the committees, that is essentially what vets, what goes on the agenda now, right?
Yeah, it's, it's, it does, yeah.
So I don't know.
I think, I think one of the, the downfalls of committee as a whole, it's basically a board meeting before the board meeting and, and your, and your public isn't getting to witness some of the interactions, some of the discussion, which I think is valuable for the public to, to see and hear that. That's because they know, I think, I think we've proven in the past and, and that we're not a, a board that has everything rubber stamped when it gets here. And I think the discussions here online, you know, live are, are pretty valuable for those people that, that wanna trust our government. I think it would work, but I think we'd have to have those online and available just as much as we would the board meeting and invite the public to those. So, I mean, if we went that route, it would be essential that they're recorded just like this meeting.
And I think we would need to, as Pat said, define more of what the purpose of the committee, our committee are.
I, I, I'm satisfied with our committees that way we're running, but, um, I certainly, if the board chooses to go a different direction, I'm not. I don't know that it'd be the end of the world one way or the other.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm satisfied with the way we're going, but if, if the majority say we're gonna change, then, then we make the best of how we change, so.
Uh, could I offer something, Commissioner Nelson?
Go ahead.
Uh, one of the things I would offer is the fact that one advantage of the committee of the whole would be, uh, they'd be defined prior to the board meeting. It would be a public meeting. There would be minutes. There in fact would be, a chair and a vice chair that isn't necessarily the chair and vice chair of the board. You would assign a chair and vice chair. And like I said, in some counties, but not all, department heads also make motions and votes, whether that's something one, the board wants to entertain. But as you try, as, as an idea travels through, sometimes it goes through as many as two committees. And sometimes it can be, um, a challenge to, uh, make sure commissioners are available too for those meetings. In a committee of the whole, they're always defined and there will still be a quorum, meaning if three people show up for committee of the whole, that's all you need, you know, as opposed to, you know, worrying about, you know, we only have one commissioner maybe at a committee meeting and things like that. So it's just a different way of doing it. No one's suggesting it's a better or a worse way. Um, it's just information we felt that the board should hear about and, and benchmarking that we thought would be important for the board and the public to know about.
I guess I, I think we should give direction if, if we wanna continue examining that or not. I, I personally am not in favor. I, but again, if the board wishes to do that, then that's.
One thing that Pat had mentioned, if we stay at the committees and get them more defined and what we should be doing there and some guidelines. And what, what should we bring? Bring in all of those committee meetings and not stop. I hate to see stuff, excuse me, stop at a committee and not reach full board for discussion, so.
Well, I think anything going through committees in, in my past, if it, if it goes through committee and even if those two commissioners are not in favor of it, it's still acceptable to go to full board. I mean, that's the way it, that's what it is.
It should be.
I mean, that, if, but you see the road you have to climb. If you've got two against you already, passing are pretty slim. The, the, in the past, the, the, the department has the right to go to the full board with that. And I, and I don't know if that needs to be in more writing in specific writing or not, but that's the way, that's the way.
More defined, yeah.
So.
Um, has there been a conversation with department heads? Like what?
Yes, yeah, cause great question. Thank you for that, Commissioner. Um, yes, we did discuss it at last month's department head meeting. And on all these topics, cause we wanted their feedback and, you know, many of them appreciate, having a couple commissioners that are in tune and know about their department. And, but they would also like five commissioners to be more in tune and know about their department as well. So I, I think it was, there was certainly support there across the board for looking at the committee of the whole. But they, but they've also indicated that, you know, the committee for many departments works, works for them, uh, as they know, as it has been, but, but they, they have all agreed too that making committees more defined and really what it means to be, let's say on a human services committee. What are the things you, you would tackle as a commissioner? Uh, cause sometimes it can be a little bit all encompassing and that, does, uh, cause some concern with department heads, but we're not trying to say that we're trying to fix something. We're just bringing a new opportunity to you. And the one thing I can offer before we move on, um, as you could certainly maybe document, let's say a best practice county that we think would be, does committee the hold? We can show you that information at a future meeting if you like, but, but we have kept the department heads in loop on it.
I do think one advantage from a commissioner's standpoint is knowing the other departments. You know, for me, I'm on human services committee and not on, you know, sheriffs and courthouse and others that I maybe am not as aware of what's going on. So I can see where there would be an advantage of that in getting to know all the departments.
On the flip side of that, if you're gonna have the in-depth conversations that every committee has at that meeting, that will last, that'll last over a day. And, uh, and then, but if you're just gonna rubber stamp yes or no, the decision, the in, the information that commissioners would be, with would be less. You would have less knowledge of everything going, if, if you didn't have committees with that. So.
I think, I, I, I think we should stop committees. I don't think we should replace committees if that's what the consideration is.
No. Yeah, if I could add something, Commissioner Nelson, um, the fact is, is by defining what our committees are doing, they can, they can seriously vet, items that then go perhaps to a committee of the whole, uh, where a lot more informal questions could be asked than could go to a board. So there's a lot of work doing it, but no one has suggested that we would end committees. Um, we just feel that, uh, there may be some value in defining these committees and then having that information go to all five of you at a, in an informal, um, mechanism, which again is still public. But it's, uh, you just can't make any decisions except whether something will go to the board or not.
Well, let's leave it at is if you're interested, uh, you know, ask more questions, but you wanna, I mean, if someone's interested in doing it going forward at.
I would like to investigate and see, you know, if it's possible. The, the, I have the same concern you have though, is the length of the meeting. We gotta, we need the committees to get specific stuff and maybe, you know, maybe they come in and maybe it's, uh, maybe it replaces our finance committee. And then all that information that the finance committee does is all five of us. I don't know.
Well, that would make, that would make some sense. Cause things that go before our finance committee, and I've always said it, it's, they're not, you can't. I, I would support replacing finance committee with committee as a whole, but you would have to be a week behind.
Yes.
And.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, that, there's some conflicts there too, to replace finance because, the finance committee is usually the day before the board meeting. And so there's some, there's some things that wouldn't work there either. You can't say we should, it should go to full board.
Yeah. Correct.
You could do committee as a whole and then the one part of it be finance, the, I don't know, that would, that seems, sounded good right away.
Sounded good right away.
Yeah, there's some of the finance stuff, we can't do that, yeah.
Future discussion?
Yeah, with your permission, Commissioner Nelson, we'll, uh, maybe I'll just put together a best practice. I'll email it to you. And then if it resonates, we could have more discussion, but we appreciate, um, the feedback. And the next one, consent agenda. Just explain what consent agenda is, is we have an agenda, as you can see here. A consent agenda would be a group of items that you would vote for all of them with one motion, with one second, one vote. And so we inquired with other counties, who has a consent agenda? Um, out of eighty seven counties, fifty eight counties have a consent agenda. Uh, two did not respond. And where we see some value with that is there are items that of the board, of course, would review when they get their packet and, with support just moving forward with, with a vote for all these items, still gives you the right to pull something out of consent, make it part of regular discussion. But it might make for a more efficient meeting and maybe a lower timeframe. And as I indicated, uh, the department has supported that. Um, but like I said, fifty eight of eighty seven counties do use a consent agenda.
So that would be more like our, um, personal requests or our, like the gambling permits that, like those.
A budget, an auditor report, but gambling permits would be a common one, yes.
All the stuff that we do all the time.
But the, the gambling permits usually have a resolution and we would want them separate. Um, minutes are so another one, but we always have corrections or changes to the minutes. Um, agenda, we usually have additions or changes to the agenda. Um.
So when they're a resolution, they cannot be on.
I would, I would, I don't know if you can have a resol- cause a resolution, I thought was supposed to actually have a roll call vote on each resolution.
You're not wrong there, Commissioner Nelson. The, uh, you, you read the resolution, you are approving the resolution number. We're saying this would be defined to certain items, which, again, there'd have to be some training with department heads on what we would include on consent and things like that. But, um, it is something that may have some value. And like I said, from a time and an efficiency standpoint. And, um, it's something that we just wanted the board to be aware of.
I attend a lot of other meetings or government units that use a consent agenda. And I, uh, Pat said, a lot of times they'll pull an item, one member for a discussion, but it saves the work.
I like saving time.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm with John. I've, I've attended some, you know, several that have that and it does seem to work.
I think I'd like to work a little further and. See if it'll work. I think we'd have to look too, and just to make sure that resolutions have to be indivisible. Like I said, I think they, do they or?
Uh, if I could respond, Commissioner Nelson, we'll, we'll, we'll do more research on this. Again, this is just information and data for you right now. And if there's an interest, we'll just continue to answer those questions for you. And we, we didn't need an answer at all. We're not looking for an answer. We're looking for, just, uh, appreciate the benchmarking and what other counties are doing.
City of Detroit Lakes does consent agenda.
Crazy does, crazy does too.
I will say in the past, I think commissioners have been, um, very, much more involved. I think this board has always been much more involved and in a lot more details than a lot of other government agencies, but. And that, a consent agenda, I mean, there are some things like, uh, human service claims could be a consent and we always.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd wanted to find those. And, um, and that'll just move forward, Commissioner Nelson, just on the capital improvement plan. We won't talk much about this because the presentation will take place till August first, but we felt maybe you should know how many, uh, counties do a countywide capital improvement plan. So out of eighty seven counties, we had forty nine that do a countywide capital improvement plan. Ten did not respond, so that could be, it's at least forty nine, it could be more. Um, we just wanted you to appreciate the numbers. Uh, and there's statutory requirements with someone like the highway department is that department that has to do a five year plan. So these are just countywide five, five year plans. And so forty nine out of eighty seven do a countywide plan. And then, um, again, the fourth item, and again, this was also reviewed with the, uh, department heads. Um, um, they, uh, appreciate the value of doing a five year capital plan. I think we're not interested in surprising the board with things that break down. What we'd like to try to do is identify when we think things are going to need to be replaced. And putting that on department heads and incorporating into a five year plan and, and deciding how we're gonna fund it and how we're gonna pay for it. And, um, but I'll save the rest of that for, uh, uh, the presentation for, uh, from Bruce Kimmel here on the first. And the fourth item just happened to be a happenstance thing as we were gathering information. Um, it kept on appearing to us. We thought we'd document it. Um, right now in our, uh, website, we provide the agenda and the minutes on the county website. We are curious to know how many counties actually do the full board packet from beginning to end, the agenda, the minutes and everything that goes in it. Cause we'd get a lot of data requests for board packets and we honor those, but, uh, we wouldn't have to do data requests if, if everything was online. And on eighty seven counties, uh, sixty have the full board packet with everything in it on the website. So I wanted to pose that to the board on whether that would be an interest. Wouldn't be difficult to do from our perspective. I think the one issue though is there are certain claims, human services claims, we would not be able to allow to be on there, but other claims would be allowed.
I think that should go on as soon as possible. Any public information.
Public information, I agree.
That's fine. Well, that's enough for benchmarking. Uh, can I continue, Commissioner, on some other items?
Do we need to, a motion or anything for that, or can we just do it?
I don't think we need a motion at all. I mean, it's, it's really just, uh, what the county would like to do. It's, um, if you'd like to make a motion, please, but, yeah.
If you don't need it, that's fine.
Um, I'll just continue just with some other items. Uh, I've been working with, uh, the museum on insurance of, we own the building, as you know, so we have insurance on the building through M C I T. Uh, but they've asked us whether we would consider using M C I T for the contents that are in the building. And so they're doing some benchmarking with their insurance and I've reached out to M C I T as well. Um, we have communicated with M C I T about closing out the insurance on the, um, the old highway building, uh, which will end at the end of July. We'll certainly confirm that we've left the building before we drop the insurance, but we have communicated with them. Um, we'd had some good news on the community based comprehensive plan. Um, we did speak with a couple vendors, both after a conversation, um, have renewed interest, uh, in it. Uh, one of them wants to have a teams meeting here this afternoon to answer some questions. Kyle and I will be on that. But we do expect that we'll get responses, um, to the community based comprehensive plan. And the questions are more focused on the transition of getting the plan done, doing the stakeholder meetings, getting the plan done and then, transitioning to developing ordinances. Those, those were the questions that we were receiving, um, from those vendors. Um, continuing on, we have, um, um, the dental grant, uh, that was approved, uh, through Bluegrass Blue Shield in twenty twenty two. Um, they have completed that, so I've requested that Jay Newbauer come to the board and present the work, what they did on it. It was about a ninety seven thousand dollar grant that the county applied for, for a dental regional facility. And so she's exploring whether August first will work. And, um, there's a final report that will have to be generated. And once that's done, there's about three thousand dollars in contingency money that will be released, but, uh, the project has come to a conclusion. Um, and then, um, that covers most of my reporting stuff. I'd like to segue to the budget, Commissioner Nelson, with your permission.
I, just one thing regarding the, um, counties that do the capital plan, could you email us out which counties do that?
Or, I'll, I'll send you the whole spreadsheet on everything if you'd like. Yeah, um, we just, it, it looks like this. It says yes, no, yes, no on it. So we'd be happy to forward that to you, the whole thing. Yep. Uh, I'm assuming every commissioner would like that. We'll just forward it to all of you. Very good.
I'd like a couple.
Okay, you'd like to. Okay, very good. Uh, with your permission, Commissioner, uh, budget twenty twenty four, uh, we did hand out a sheet there for you. Um, the timeline, um, we're, we're within our timeframe. Uh, many department heads have completed their initial budget worksheet. Um, and of course, we wanted that done by July seventeenth. Uh, we've had a meeting with, uh, four departments so far to review their first budget. Um, the balance of those, we're gonna finish here before the end of the week, early next week. So we are on schedule. Um, one of the things that's related to this is the packet we handed out on county program aid. It's just got a list of numbers. Um, uh, we're emailing this out to each department head because much of the funding, uh, that's available is distinctive sometimes with a particular department. As you can see from that summary, there's about two point three million that of new county aid that Becker County is receiving. And, uh, the list is, you know, county program aid, probation, public safety aid, state housing aid, PILTS, which is, um, payment in lieu of taxes, SCORE, homeless prevention aid, medical assistance. So sometimes it's a specific department like human services that will benefit by this. Um, or the economic development authority or land commissioner, depend on which project we're looking at. Um, probation, uh, Brian Rubenstein visited you and kinda gave you an overview of that. Um, the public safety aid is interesting. It's about a million dollars. Um, unfortunately, uh, if you look at the subsequent sheets, we have a sheet that covers just about each item. Uh, in the case of the public safety aid, covers a lot of things. What it doesn't cover is a building, uh, but it does cover other items. So, um, we sent it to each department head just so they can be creative as they develop their own budget. And just understand that there's new aid that is available to them. In some cases, it's one time aid, but it's still there and we need to acknowledge it. Um, I think the other thing that we are keeping in the loop on is the opioid money as well. Um, uh, on whether that could assist from a budget development standpoint. And also there's those L A T C F dollars as well, uh, that are available. So we're making that part of the budget review process. Uh, we're gonna review all this at the department head meeting next week. Um, but that's really what I had for, for budget this time. Um, and then with, uh, Commissioner Nelson's permission, just the legislative update, um, that's also in that same packet. Um, uh, that information, of course, uh, is legislative, so I covered that. But the other things I wanted to make sure you're aware of is, you know, there's a, there's the opportunity for the county to develop a cannabis ordinance. So I provided a sample ordinance along with the cannabis information to Kyle Verberg to review and, take it through every process that he deems necessary. And, but I have asked him to certainly reach out to commissioners and get some feedback from you on what you'd be looking for. Um, but that is something that the, uh, the Association of County Administrator Conference, I was at last week, that was something that was talked about at length. Because there's a, there's an investment across the board that's gonna be by the sheriff's office, but also from a ordinance standpoint. And we just wanna make sure that we are keeping the board in the loop on it. And like I said, Kyle will be.
I don't think we, I don't think we can wait that long to get an ordinance for cannabis use on public properties. I think we have to move very quickly and get ahead of, get ahead of when it's allowable. I mean, I think it's allowable. I mean, I think it's allowable August 1st, is it?
And we have, and we have a meeting August 1st, I think.
And I think.
Well, we should be, have something.
Yeah, I agree.
The city of Detroit Lakes didn't kill the Clemson.
He touched base on that, that they're working on something.
Yeah, they're working on something.
I thought that they passed it.
Yeah. I mean, we need to, we need to have it in place. We can't, we can't have a, I think we should mimic the city's.
Yeah.
Public, public usage, so, so we don't have any conflicts. But I think we have to have that.
Sure.
Done by, I mean, it's legally not to purchase in Minnesota till, what, the end of the year, is it?
It's twenty-twenty-five, I think.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, you can start growing it, I think.
Anyway, but I think we need to, we need to let people know that, you know, public use in this, on public properties, it's not, we don't want it there. This is, if you want to use it, it should be in your personal space. But, but, but I don't think we can wait for it because the last, all the other ordinances are put on the back burner for the, it cannot wait.
Yeah, I would agree.
Is, if we, if we have something ready to vote on August 1st, is that enough time or do we need to do something sooner?
Is it?
Well, I, I think we need to have some public hearings and, but let's, let's move it, just, let's just do a, a basic ordinance of, you know, the basics and look at the city of D Ls and maybe mirror that to some degree and say, you know, we, it's just not allowable to consume on whatever there is, so we, so it's in place as soon as possible. Maybe run that through, you can run that through planning and zoning, but I think we run the public hearings just at our next board meeting, run the first reading of it and then we'll.
We don't have public, planning commissioners.
Well, I don't, it doesn't have to go through planning commission. I think it just goes through, you know, the commissioners and, and planning and zoning and just sit down and say, you know, let's just put together, we can always amend it later on, but we should, we should have something on the books to say, you know, we, we recognize that we're, we have to get ahead of this and.
So you're meeting with Kyle on something else this afternoon?
This, this afternoon, yeah, on the community-based comprehensive plan. And he's already received this earlier than you have received it. Could I just respond, Commissioner Nelson, on the public use? We did have a legal expert at the conference and that question was brought up. What do you do prior to getting an ordinance in place? And as it was explained to us as administrators, is, is smoking cannabis or using cannabis can be done in public places? I want to say this right. If, if smoking a cigarette, if that's not allowed in a public space, then using marijuana also is not allowed in a public space. They're equivalent, is how it was explained to us. Right now, people cannot come in here and smoke a cigarette or a pipe on the building. They therefore can also not do that independent of any ordinance we have. That's how it was explained to us.
What about like city parks or beaches or?
Public as public as they've indicated and, but that's how it was explained to us. So I, but I appreciate the urgency that Commissioner Nelson is sharing. We do want to define it as cities are defining ordinances, anything outside of city is the county and.
They look at sitting at a, one of our public beaches and someone.
Yeah.
Yeah, what can we find out what other counties are doing about this?
Yeah, and in fact, I could tell you, fifty of the counties were there at this meeting and they're all playing catch-up and they're all going as quick as they can. And they're in kind of, we're in sort of the same mode as most counties and trying to move forward.
Why don't, why don't we ask those commissioners to at least throw a draft together, see what the process is to enact the ordinance and maybe we should, maybe we should do it by the books this time and, and.
I would also consult with the city.
Absolutely, I've already reached out, yeah. And, and there is a, there is a ordinance that they gave us at the county. That's, I also included that in the information here. Yeah. Well, thank you for that. I'll just continue on from a legislative standpoint. The final item that I had was also in your packet is a lot of changes as it relates to employee relations. And we felt the best document that we could find, and this was actually handed out at the conference, was something Otter Tail put together. So we said, well, we're not going to reinvent the wheel. We'll just provide that information. And it lists a lot of things relating to what our inherent managerial rights, how that's changed relating to bargaining units and in negotiations. So we felt we should just provide you a summary in, in complete. We're going to review this in more depth with our department heads, but a lot of changes that were made at the legislature and we felt that the board needs to be aware of it. And we're already in depth going through it, but we're in process with training our department heads so they're aware of it. But a lot of changes and it's just something that we have to get up to speed on.
One thing that would be nice is if you would include this information in the board packet, so we have it prior to today to look at it if we have any questions, because now it's.
Sure.
It's tough to, tough to go through, what, twenty pages in the, in the few minutes?
Yeah, I, I received this on Friday at the, at the event, but your, your point's well taken, Commissioner.
Hey, anything else for Pat? Moving on then. Claims.
I'm requesting a motion to approve regular claims, auditor warrants over ninety days and additional.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second to approve the claims. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next, I have Resolution seven twenty-three two D, Humane Society of the Lakes for raffle August twenty-six at Pitt six eleven in Lake Unishtownship.
Entertaining motion to approve two D.
I'll approve.
Motion by John.
I'll second.
Second by Dave. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning Denise.
I'll make a motion to approve the U Care Car Seat Education Rate Amendment.
Second by Erica. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. And the DHS crisis grant amendment.
So the dollar amount stayed the same. What was amended was the budget, just some moving around of money that was over ten percent.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, and that was just the reason, so the reason was just transferring within the, within that nine-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-eleven dollars.
Correct.
Just changing the, where it goes.
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
And the last item are claims for human services, public health and transit.
Make a motion to approve claims.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions on claims? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you Denise.
Thanks Denise.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just have one item for consideration from the board. It comes from the recommendation from the benefits committee, recommendation for a broker that's responded to the RFQ that went out. We did review the information through the committee and the, and the committee's recommendation is that we go forth with N I S, the National Insurance Services, Mr. Steve Smith. I have sent the contract to the county attorney for review. Just wanted to let you all know that. So if there are any concerns with that, I would also like the board to allow if there's any minor changes to the contract as well after he reviews it.
Did you, did you put out a, you know, the, for our last meeting, the presenter backed out, so we had a meeting then the next day to decide which one, but it was, it was kind of poorly attended by the committee.
Correct.
Did you reach out to the rest of the committee at all? Does?
I put the update out. I did have a couple of members reach out and ask some questions. I also did put out a message out on our Teams channel and I, I did not receive any feedback from any additional individuals.
And you're confident in the price that we discussed at the meeting was accurate for the two? So this is the, the most cost-effective? Both of them had strengths and weaknesses that the committee saw. I think we'd have been fine with, you know, with either one. This is a bigger facility, does local, a lot more knowledge on county and it's got the city of Detroit Lakes or the school, I mean.
The school.
So there's a lot of local usage of this company. The other one had some real positives in many other areas, so I, both of them are really qualified. This one came in with the price considerably, you know, more reasonable, I think, or more appropriate for what we were looking for. So then we went with this one, that recommendation. So.
Yeah, I, I would also mimic your, I mean, your comments as well. I, I don't think it would have been a win situation to have a broker on board anyway to maneuver through.
To what?
Any broker. I'm just saying both were very qualified.
Yes.
Just to have a broker going forth with, working with the committee and really looking at what our options are to get our healthcare costs down and, and looking at all the priorities that the committee has set forth.
And, and the one thing I noticed, this broker only works with public entities, not private ones.
I don't think only, but they.
But they specialize.
But they specialize. Yep, they have, they have a significant number of, of public agencies. And many, I think he said like twenty-two agencies in the last year, he's helped transition from Pete to another.
Yeah.
And not saying that we are going to transition, but I mean.
Correct.
That if we are, they have quite a bit of knowledge with it.
Yep.
The other thing is with this broker, it will highlight what things the, the benefits committee was looking for, such as discounts and workouts, you know? I mean, that was one, one example that I think Pete does not have that currently, correct?
They do not.
So if, if that's something important to, to the county, then that, that would be something that they would look for and, and price for us, so. So, so we are, how do you, what is the wordage on this? Carrie?
I would like a motion for us to be able to go forth with, going forth with the contract to bring on this broker.
So entertain a motion to authorize the board chair to sign the contract agreement with the.
N I S.
N I S brokerage firm.
Yes, that's correct.
And with the committee's review of the final contract if.
There's any modifications that the county attorney comes up with upon his review.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the medical broker and allow the chair to sign.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Did we have a, did we have a price format in, did you have that kind of listed what the cost was going to be or so people, so we know what the cost is? I mean.
Well, we know it, it'll be one percent of the premiums, but without knowing what the cost of the premiums.
Right, but our estimate was.
Oh, yeah. Well, we went off our current premiums.
So the other one was significantly more.
The other one was four to five percent of the premiums.
Yeah.
Right. So it was significantly.
Significantly less. Anyway, any other questions?
But this, this one will go up two percent every year, is that right? Is that what it says?
That was originally in the contract, but again, through, through the review of the contract, you know, he was willing to negotiate that as well. So we'll attempt to get the cost as low as we can.
Yeah, there was some confusion on what it was being charged. So Carrie did a follow-up during the meeting and clarified it for us on a straight one percent. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank the committee to send out a, I mean.
He spoke for a while.
Nine fifteen.
Are you okay?
Doesn't happen very often.
Well, we will be on break. Judy, do you, do you want to take Judy?
I just, if you wanted me to start, I wanted to be here.
We can take, we, anyone need a break right now or we can take Judy ahead of the?
Let me take, take Judy for a break.
You have one item, Judy, so.
Yep. Good morning, commissioners. I have one item. It's the renewal of our Office three sixty-five. Our Office three sixty-five is our email and it's all of our Microsoft products like Word, Excel, PowerPoint, and a couple of other ones that you guys probably don't use. It's in line with what we were expecting this year, eighty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty cents. And it is, we'd like to purchase it from the same company that we've been using for the last five years. They know our installation and it makes a lot of sense and it doesn't change no matter where we purchase it from. So I'd like approval to purchase this, to accept their quote and purchase this, get the invoice and purchase this within the next, I think it's ninety days. I think it's due in about ninety days.
Okay, and this is renewal.
It is a renewal.
For Office three sixty-five, there was a day, remember John, when we, we weren't even paying for our licensure? That was many years ago before they were requiring it, I think. But we got it, we got the benefit for quite a while and, and we are, but we are paying for it appropriately now. Fortunately, it's a high cost, but if you want to have things work today, it, it costs a lot of money. So entertain a motion to approving the quote for lift-off for eighty-three thousand, four twenty-six, forty.
Do you?
Motion by John.
I'll second.
Second by Erica. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judy. Now we'll take a break. We're getting ahead.
We're ahead of, still way ahead, so. I know, I know that the highway McGough is coming and they won't be here for a while, so we're. We are ahead of schedule and have time to dialogue a little bit if you want to. I know we were just talking about the fair and, and the commissioners always ask to join serving pie and ice cream to the senior citizens. So that's Jerry, what, what time is that usually? Thursday at Jerry's usually in line, so. That's, was it one, one or 1:30 the program starts and after that the pie and ice cream for the senior citizens? And usually it's, it's just for senior citizens, but usually we get a bunch of people in there. And I, I said, I have not taken tickets, so if someone wants to control that door, they're welcome to it, but I'm serving whoever comes here.
I just throw their tickets on the table.
Yeah, but they do like to get a count to see how many people have been served and that. But, um. Yeah. I usually, usually get there a little early and get things set up. They usually have everything back there and just help get everything organized and.
Usually there's plenty of help.
Yeah, was, there was one year there where this little, I was getting a little worried because there was nobody there and it, it hurt this year when Aiken and Mark were always there. So I got a little worried some of anyone who's gonna be there, but they will be there. They haven't, they, they weren't there last, but Bob came and served.
Yeah.
Was he the only legislator last year?
Yeah, I think so. Was Jim there?
I think he was at the fair, but I did, I don't know if he's, he didn't serve, I don't think. I'm sure he probably will be this year, but.
Yeah, I would think.
It's tough when you're a candidate, that's a little bit, I think it was candidates last year, weren't they? But hopefully, hopefully our legislators come and help. It's the only work we get out of them, it's a joke I always tell them. Sheriff Glender, you're ready to roll, so we may as well get to yours.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. First of all, I just want to thank you for that moment of silence for Fargo PD and, and the three officers and everybody else involved in that. And I just want to also let you know that over the weekend, there was a Morrison County deputy that was struck by a vehicle and is in critical condition. I shouldn't say critical, I'm not exactly sure, but had some severe injuries, so we want to think about them also. Uh, first item I have is a, I'm looking for approval on the auto theft grant for 10,800. We're looking at purchasing two pair of night vision to help us out with patrolling for that.
Move to approve two B.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Richard. For the grant, grant approval to pay for the night vision goggles. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Uh, item number two A is a, an agreement renewal. This is for Celebrate for 2324 in the amount of $6,100. Uh, this is also a, a renewal.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion second, any questions? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item two B is the motor oil and maintenance agreement for 2324. Uh, this is for our watch guard hardware and software. And that amount is 7,740. Uh, excuse me, 7,353, I had to go to the second page.
Yep, we got the discount, 5% discount. Okay, wishes to the board.
Move to approve.
Motion by John.
Okay.
Second by Richard, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And the last item is Resolution 7232C, which is our WeFest agreement for WeFest 2023. And this is for law enforcement response and traffic control. And I just also want to, uh, you to recognize that on finance, I did talk to Mary because it did not say law enforcement response, so. And this is in the amount of 66,350, which went up from 55,000 last year due to increases.
Okay.
Move, move to approve.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Richard, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Do you know, are they selling single day tickets yet or are they still holding to the three day?
I am not sure, I, we had a meeting last week and I believe it was still three day.
Uh, expectations of attendance?
Upwards from last year.
Is it?
Yeah. I can tell you that, they don't have a, an exact number yet, but they're still selling.
Yeah. I, I don't, I don't, I haven't looked, but I've heard the lineup has some pretty higher, some more people that they want, want to see, I don't know.
Yeah.
They did open one in Des Moines campground though this year, didn't they?
Yes, Eagle will now be open as well. Sounds like everything's filling up.
That's good, good and concerning, but, um. Well.
Can I just say one more thing? When we went to Colorado to visit their similar festival, honestly, if you would be standing and looking out in the crowd, it looks just like our WeFest, a lot of similarities, but we did learn a, a lot from them also. And they plan on coming out here, probably not this year, but next year to do the same thing that we did. Share information and work, work together to build a more safe event, so. Just wanted to thank you for that as well.
You know, I'm sure, you know, there's something to consider for discussion, you know, maybe, maybe look at that entity and see if they want to cross train and, and share, share, you know, volunteers or officers at times too, being there at different times of the year, maybe there would be some specialty people that could. It's just a, just crossed my mind when you're sitting here, it's like that, that knowledge helps, you know, from one to the other, so.
They, they are fortunate enough to have, all of their workers are, are all deputies. They have that big of an agency, they don't have to ask for outside help. I can't even think.
For temp, temporary assistance.
Right, uh, they have upwards of 150 deputies.
And you said one big thing plus for them is they got one entrance.
One entrance, correct, they have, they have one campground, uh, and where we have six and possibly seven. Two major highways going through it, they don't have, you know, there, there's no highways going through their event.
You know, I, did you want to mention that, you know, anything with the county is gonna try to address that the, if we're on a crackdown on anything specific out there or we're gonna, it's gonna be, this isn't gonna be like hopefully improvements on future, on for future enforcement of some issues or?
Yeah, you know, I think one of the, the major issues that we've experienced every year is the underage drinking. And with that, and it, it's not just the underage drinkers that get in, involved in fights, but that is the majority. Uh, and that's one thing that we want to cut down on, do what we can to, again, make it a safer event for everybody, uh, more enjoyable for everybody. So that's one, one thing that we're planning on.
You know, I think, I think that's a message we want to, want people to hear, I mean, especially the people that are underage drinking, we, that, the security force out there and the, and the local law enforcement is gonna be looking for that. And, and I know in some years it's, you know, it was pretty bad with some of the security that they, that was in the, the old days. So hopefully that we can limit that or minimize that to, you know, reduce some of the, the calls that you get.
Yeah, and, and our staffing was low also, so. Um, but yeah, it, you know, it all boils down to making the event as safe as possible. And, um, you know, if, if they're, if they're in there without a pass or, or if they're getting into trouble, they're gonna be, WeFest isn't gonna put up with it either, they're gonna be.
Yeah, it seems like they're, they're more proactive on some of these concerns. But you know, the, what's impressed me though in the past or in the last couple of, well, the few events is the, the DUIs have really went down. I think people have taken notice that if you're gonna drive, you better not be drinking around there because you will be, um, we, we pulled over and, and, because we used to even have that mobile, mobile, um, state patrol mobile site out there that we'd process them in.
Our, our command post, the old Batmobile is what it was called.
Yeah.
Uh, but yeah, the, you know, and there's, there, there's a lot more buses. There really is no excuse for anybody to get into a vehicle and drive intoxicated.
Yeah.
Um, they, they can be picked up right at the gates. There's, uh, uh, you know, shuttle buses going day and night, so.
And I think there's people that come down and, and give rides with Uber or Lyft and, and so there's all kinds of, you know, opportunities, so.
Yeah.
But at least that's a positive, I, I think there's, the traffic is much better than it used to be. I mean, you can get, you, you know, people are dropping people off and people are, are getting those rides there and, and so. I, I think that's one positive anyway that we, in the past years, there's less drinking and driving, so.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions for Sheriff Glender? Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Todd.
I see I'm stalled enough, I see our guys are here, so we can move, get, move the clip up again. Um, Steve.
My name is Chair.
My name is Steve.
I have two items before us today, the first one is Resolution 07232E, it's a personnel request to per, uh, allow us to hire a natural resource manager for Forester. And then also to accept donations for the Dunlop tram repairs. I, this is went through committee, it's went through the finance committee. They did put together some information on model acres that we have for Forester compared to other areas, if the board wants to see that, as well as a little summary of what the actual net cost will be or net revenue for this position. Uh, it was my mistake, it should have been put in the board packet, but I guess it was.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yes, yes, he has a, he has a copy he'll hand to press too.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, this one, this part was in the packet.
Yep. I, I saw it.
As we discussed this through, um, and I think Dan, Dan was talking about it, you know, when he was still here, he needed another Forester and, um, and we just said, well, just, let's get a, show us the, show us how it pays for itself and, and I think that's what Steve and Mitch have done. I think, I think the numbers are a little bit, I think are a little high. I mean, I think, I don't think one Forester is gonna bring in that much, just because I think, um, we're gonna be asking other duties, you know, and I think that was one thing we talked about in committee that if we have properties out, public access out east and they're to go doing timber stuff all out east, that they can maybe manage some of those, um, you know, maintenance on some of those sites rather than having someone drive specific out there, so try to find some efficiencies on, on that. But, um, it's clearly that if the projections are right, um, certainly would more than pay. But, uh, you, we always have the, a scale, there's only so much wood the local people can handle too, so. Um, if you have to, put out too much, some of that will drop down to less, so there's a, I don't know what the chart is, but. But anyway, I think, I think we've had to and I think the, I think it's certainly should be able to, the, the job should be able to fund itself by the generation of the sales of, of timber, so.
Sure. So we did a pretty good job of covering that, does anybody have any other questions about the position?
I think, I think another thing that's important to note too is that we have 75,000 acres, is that right, of tax forfeit land? And most counties, um, have a Forester for every 30,000 acres, so.
Correct.
We, we have a definite need to.
Okay, any other questions?
I'll make a motion to hire that Forester.
Okay, motion by Richard.
I'll second.
Second, and that is Resolution 2E. Yep, correct. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, the second item is, uh, need to accept donations at, uh, Commissioner Okerson has been kind of lead on getting donations to help cover tram repairs and, and, uh, some funding for the operation out there.
Um, Steve, haven't we accepted some of these donations already?
We, we did the memorial, but not these, we're waiting until it gets more finalized and, uh, I think the total amount raised is 42,000 something.
Sure.
Not 100% got passes, but a lot of them got a pass because some people donated, don't even live on the lake.
So the total money received is 42,350 of that, 11,875 was to purchase tickets. So the total donation is 30,675, that's in excess of whatever those ticket costs were. Uh, it's, did a fantastic job, we're raising some funds to help.
I'm a good little helper.
So.
I do have one more check for you too.
Okay. So for the county to accept those, we're gonna need a resolution, uh, just accepting those, those donations.
Move to accept the donations for Dunlop tram repairs.
Motion by John.
I'll second.
Second by Erica. Um, again, a, a great thanks and, and this will, this not only paid for the current upkeep, but hopefully we can find, find a longer term solution and, and move forward.
There's probably a little repair on the wheel, the trolley wheels that we need to do.
Correct, there's been a number of repairs made, it, it seems to me though that, that we're finally maybe getting to the end of some of the maintenance that the, we've had with, with the tram and this last weekend it worked without any issues and so.
Lot have been neglected for years and then finally caught up.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, we'll take a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and again, another thank you to those individuals donating to keep that historic area alive for us. I don't know if you're, it'd be interesting to see a little bit more history on the, the, it used to be a, um, what did they call it, what was that passage that they used to have, it was more of a locks and, wasn't it a lock?
It was steamboats from Detroit Lakes and Pelican Lake.
Yeah. And then when.
There is, in certain areas, there's a lot of history of it, um.
All right, thank you again.
Thanks, Steve.
Good morning.
Hey. So I'm bringing forth Resolution 07232A regarding marriage, marriages fees in our office. To change the ordination and certificate of filing fee from $20 per filing to 40. Clay County has already changed that fee to 40 and the other counties around us are actually bringing forth to try to change it to that too. So at this point, starting August 1st, um, legislation changed where any individual who registers as a civil marriage officiant with a local register in the county of the state can do so as long as they're 21 years old. So that just pretty much opens it up to anyone can officiate a marriage at this point. They just need to record a certificate of filing, which they get from our office.
Can they, can those same people offer, give a divorce license?
You know, that should be the next thing.
Because we really wouldn't.
Exactly, it would be nice.
I might get one of those licenses.
That, that'd put court out of business though. So it'd be to change that and the other one would be to set or implement a $25 change that fee on a marriage license that's already been issued. So if it needed to be replaced due to they decide to change their name or they lost their marriage license, you have to have that in hand in order to get married, married, so it would just be a replacement fee.
You're right, increase this, increase the replacement.
Well, there was no.
There was none, there was nothing set previously, so. It'd be a $25 fee if you lose your paperwork and need it reissued or if you decide you want to change a major thing, that would change something on your license.
Okay, it was, went through committee and is reasonable, so wish the board.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
2A?
2A.
Motion by Dave.
I'll second.
Second by Erica, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And highway.
Pat, could you ask, um, we could have probably have printed out the, um, proposed changes for, for our work session, maybe a paper copy. Sure. She's already doing that.
Okay.
By the way, we copies of the ordinance, if we have time, we should.
Okay.
But she's printing that out right now, so.
Someone's, oh, it's mine.
Morning Commissioners, um, Highway has three items for your consideration today.
No, no.
First item being a capital expenditure request. In our moving into our new facilities, um, we needed some storage racking for our cutting edges. The cutting edges are the, um, metalware bars that are put on the bottom of the plows that we replace routinely throughout the winter. We need to keep an inventory of those, our old building had essentially wooden shelving and, and built in. Uh, we couldn't bring those over and we wanted a, a safer, more efficient way to do this, so we found some racking that allows us to, uh, stack our cutting edges of various lengths, um, to store them in a convenient place and minimize the space they take. Uh, we looked, uh, we got two quotes, uh, the low quote is from a vendor we talked to in Fargo. Uh, Dakota Storage Products, uh, they came in with a quote of 55, $154, um, for a system. And we found a comparable online, um, and we're recommending, uh, using Dakota Storage for this, um, purchase. And we're also requesting to use special general funds on this, um, as it was now planned for. And, and part of the new building, and so it's a one-time expense.
What about revenues from the sale? The auction?
We will have revenues from the sale, yes. I don't know what our estimate as this point is, it's, it's hard, it's hard to say, you know.
Looks like it may be pretty low. A few items are going to get in bed up, but.
Not enough pay for the racking.
Oh, I think, I think it will be, there's enough items, I think it'll end up being enough, but, um, I'd say, I would any, any, I'd say you can pay for it from the sale and if any needed money from, from the reserve fund, but it doesn't matter, it's, it's gonna be so little. It all goes back in, or just the sale item, then just go back into general fund.
No.
And do it that way, that's fine.
Move to approve the request for the heavier access.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Richard, any other discussion? Um, just to be clear, then it will come out as special reserve funding. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Next item, um, we have our construction manager from our new facilities, McGuff here today. Uh, we want to discuss, um, some cost increases that they have incurred during the, the project. Uh, in the project memo, I, uh, included in the packet, package. We have, uh, I provided some background information, uh, and when we hired McGuff here to start their services, essentially they, they brought us through this whole, uh, project, um, with delivering it, um, in what we call a construction manager at risk process. We had the architect, um, present or develop a number of concepts even prior to when they started and during. But when we hired them, essentially then they had to help us build the estimates and determine, uh, our preferred concept. At which time then we really dig in and then, uh, get the cost finalized and do the bidding packages and that. Um, I don't know if you can pull up that memo and we can just show that timeline, but anyways, um, pre-construction services are essentially all their work, uh, that starts from the time we hired them until the start of construction. They do this work to develop their price that they give to us, their guaranteed maximum price. Uh, and then which we accept and then, um, move forward with that construction phase. Um, in their proposal, when we solicited for construction managers, they had a price of approximately $18,000, uh, their estimate of time was in that range of four to six months. With our process, we started out with, uh, approximately about four concepts to review. We had, uh, the board wanting us to look at several cost-saving options, looking at different, uh, options and different concepts. So there was a number of estimates and, and types of buildings that we studied that carried on for a period much longer than that was anticipated. Um, the initial start of it, um, we started in, um, 2020 in the early spring, uh, we went through a process. And then the work was essentially suspended due to not enough consensus built on determining what building type to use. There was other factors too, we were just beginning the COVID phase and we just thought it was a good time to pause. We resumed that work again, um, the following year, we had a, a new commissioner then to bring up to speed. With the new board. with the new board and start this process over. We reviewed some other preferred concepts and we continued to look at some building types until a final preferred concept designed to move forward with and developing that GMP was decided essentially a year after they started. The work after that then, which is performed, I think probably on a normal schedule. Our difference, we had just one X, we had two GMPs. So it did take a little extra time and we did have rebidding of the roofing. So their development of getting quotes and bidding packages did take a little bit longer there as well. They have been, but they are requesting to be compensated for their extra work. I think I'll maybe let them share, but the $18,000 does not cover their, their time or materials for the extra work they did. They have that estimate at about $78,000. So they have made a proposal. They have incurred some cost savings into the project and they're also requesting some extra money from us to help kind of cover just their cost of time. This is Oliver. And again, or Finnaman.
Finnaman.
Finnaman. It's been a while since we've seen Oliver. He was the initial project lead and manager on this project. And Joe Casper, he was our project manager throughout the work.
Yeah. Well, thanks Jim. You pretty well kind of lined out the facts there. So yeah, my role in the project was the pre-construction manager for, for the project. Think the, probably the biggest thing for us is, you know, based off of the way the RFP was written, we assumed that there would be three estimates done. We ended up doing 12 estimates just due to evaluating different building types. And then the, the duration of time, which we worked on pre-construction. So like Jim said, we were, when we proposed, we are anticipating a four to six month phase. And we were taking out the time it was on pause. We were actively doing pre-construction work for about 20 months. So just the additional number of estimates and the just the extended duration of time that we were actively working on pre-construction led to the cost overruns on the project. And I think, you know, we, we realized that very early on in the project and had brought this up as a item that we had, had wanted to start talking about. And if the project came in under budget, we were hoping to be able to recoup our, our costs. So flash forward about a year and here we are now. The, the project has come in under budget and hence, hence the reason we're here seeing if we can recoup our cost overrun.
Did you guys talk about this in highway committee?
A little bit and to bring forward for board discussion.
Well, I certainly see when we ask you to bid other, you know, second rounds for like the roof. And we did ask, we did ask extra, the certainly the, we certainly asked for a lot of design, design concepts during that 18 to 20 month time. So certainly their, their original number is, is low. I don't know. I'm sure everyone, if anyone else has any thoughts on it.
Well, my only concern is we didn't hear nothing about it till now. And I understand you were waiting to see, but I, I, this is my first time doing this.
Yeah. Joe brought it up to us a month or so ago in former.
Yeah. So I brought it up to Jim, actually probably last summer, just as a discussion talking point. Hey Jim, we've had some overruns in pre-construction. We want to be a team player. We want to ensure things go, things go how they should. And they certainly did. And the team was great. So, so kudos to Becker County and the design team for that matter. But we didn't, we didn't want to go for a change order. We didn't, if, if we ran up to the GMP and didn't have any project savings, then we weren't going to recoup the costs. And it is just costs. So it's, it's cost McGuff. It's not, it's not any profit or anything like that. So with, with having savings on the project, it's not going to be a change order to Becker County. It's not going to increase the value of the project. It's just going to take some of those savings and allow us to recoup the costs that McGuff had. And so it was brought up last summer as hey, this is, this is an item we would like to address once we kind of land the plane and realize we're going to have those, those savings in those places. And if it's possible at the end of the job to rediscover those and recoup those costs, then, then we'd like to do that. So that, that's why it's coming up formally right now. It was just, it was just discussions previously.
Yeah, I agree. Our past board, we'd get together and go over whatever plans and stuff submitted and all, and then they wanted to look at something different. So I was flipping back and forth from design to design and coming up with more estimates and.
And we asked for a lot of estimates and we, I mean, if you remember, two of you weren't here at the time, but we asked for comparisons between, you know, concrete and steel and concrete and wood, steel, concrete. And, you know, we asked for numerous, numerous comparisons. And this is even before you were on compared to what the cost, if there was cost savings, you know, for steel and, and, and at the time, this was, I mean, this was a long time ago. McGuff said there, there is no savings if you don't go, I mean, concrete is, is cheaper than steel at the time. And I remember the, the board had trouble believing that at the time. It's like, how can, how can this be? And when you, and it was broke down even further than about those savings. So there's definitely, we definitely did ask more, more of the construction management team than, than I think that they anticipated or were bargaining for. What's, what's the dollar amount? I think that, that would be fair. You know, there, there's the, I mean, they did, and I think they explained here that they, it was a four to six month process and it ended up being 18 to 20 and three estimates turned into 12 estimates. So I mean, just by doing the simple math, four, that was four times the estimates and four times the time. And what are you asking about four times the dollar amount?
Correct. Yep. Yeah. I think we'd initially anticipated 250, 260 hours for the pre-construction work. And we ended up with just over 1,200 hours spent on it.
Jim, did you have a recommendation? But I mean, I know you analyzed it and put through the time to say what would be a reasonable number for us to consider.
I think, you know, they bring forward what the cost savings is on here and, you know, we do have some contingency money to help cover, you know, anything beyond the cost savings. Cost savings of 44,000 is significant and it was mainly due to their good management of the job. And reading through their contract too, if you want to look exactly at contract language, they are do this and they are being generous, I think, in just submitting cost of time.
And what was the total then?
$78,515.
Seventy eight, five?
Four cents. Or they're sent on their four cents. Four cents.
So contractually, we are, we are to pay, I mean, this was within the contract that we originally did.
Yeah. And, and I know.
I think that's, that's the key here.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not just giving this because you guys did a great job. This, you know, we're contractually obligated to pay what you're, I mean, that's, that's the key to me. I mean, if you don't, if you want, we don't want to go any farther than, if, if, I mean, as far as they could take us and ask for it in court if, if we didn't come to an agreement, I would imagine. I hope, I'm sure they don't want to do that and I'm sure we certainly don't want them to do that. So I, I trust Jim's judgment on, on the cost that he's reviewed and, and I know we've had discussions and I, and I know Joe has brought this up quite a bit earlier and, and it's just been, you know, he just kind of said, just so you're, you know, this, there is some fees coming. There, or there's some, we've put in a lot more. And I tell you, we had such a, we, the experience we had out there was an exceptional one. It was a, it was a very good working relationship and I wish Tanner was here because he, he's the one that's the boss of the whole thing, I think. So just such a good, just such a good relationship too with, with the contractors that they, I mean, they settled, they, they settled things before they even became any issues, I think, with, with being on site. So I'm supportive of Jim's recommendation and that's, I know he's not, I know Joe, Jim is conservative enough to not be throwing county money away without, you know, really analyzing it and saying that this is, we are, we are contractually obligated to, to make this payment. So.
I'm, I'm supportive of it too. I'm just with Richard that it would have been nice to have known that this was coming, I guess.
Yeah, I guess, I guess.
I think that maybe that's just because I'm new on the board and it all happened for me, but.
I think a lot of it, you know, with all the additional estimates, a couple of years ago, I was wondering when we're going to, it's going to cost us more just the planning and all this because we're out of scope from what is originally supposed to be. And that's because our past board members and stuff wanted to look at something else. Yep. There's a research, those different estimates and so there was a lot of time involved in doing that. So I guess then to be supportive of Jim's recommendation too.
So I think the taking from this is maybe, maybe future jobs that you would have, you might want to, whoever that your contact is, is to prep the board prior to, as soon as possible, when you see extra expenses coming and and I think, I think we could, we could do a better job in highlighting, making ourselves more knowledgeable on the contract itself when we, when we, because we should know, just like the architect, we end up paying more fees for the architect's time when, when we took so long. We, I mean, we paid for that upfront and we, we, I remember we had expense and discussions on those at that time. So and we've had these type of situations come before us before, before on some bridge projects where the engineer said, you know, this, this part of this wasn't covered. Like on the Lake Park Bridge, we had some extra fees there. So it's not, it's not totally uncommon, but it's, it's, it's not as, not as pleasant if we have, if we know what's coming. But the cost savings of, was significant on this. The job, the job performance was, was great. But again, the reason I'm supporting this is because I, I believe we're obligated by the contract to, to pay that. So. With that, wishes of the board. It's not just because it was a great job and you saved us money. It's because we are, it's paying for the, paying for what we got. So not.
Need a motion for it or?
I would assume we need a, Jim, do you have a?
Yeah, I guess a motion to accept or allow use of contingencies in the cost savings to cover the additional cost for the pre-construction services.
Okay. Entertaining motion to that effect?
I won't.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Richard. Any other discuss, discussion?
Should we put the dollar amount in there too? Seventy eight?
Um, I think it was. I think.
Motion.
From contingency would be.
Forty pound. Four, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Difference. Okay.
Would you, do you have that number, Jim? The contingency would be.
Contingency money is $33,515 and four cents, cost savings of 45,000 was it?
Yeah.
Okay. Hey, any, anything else with those numbers in the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Jim, you have one other little item in front of.
Just a little one? Yes. I know that there's a couple of new commissioners, but each year we present an annual report of the county highway financial expenses. This is required by state statute. So we prepare reports every year. We were required to track all our costs that we put on our roads and all the revenues and presented in this financial report here. It certainly has a lot more detail than maybe you're interested in, but there are just some first three pages kind of capture, you know, the work that was done. We had a significant construction year this year due to the building and all that. And, and I know that all the work hadn't been completed, but you look at $18 million of state aid funds expended this year and smart project funds and other funds. That is a significant amount in our program. Typically we've been under 10,000. But our sales tax is allowing us to do more projects and we just, with our public works building, we've had a lot of work now. So in future years, you might see this number a little bit less, but and it is due to all the hard work of all of our employees that, that do that. Looking through here, there's a lot of information you, if you have questions from your townships or whatever, you can see what money they get and stuff like that. We do help them too. So we do kind of track some of those expenses in there. When you look at revenues that we receive from townships or cities and stuff, a lot of that might be from our seal coat work. A lot of us, they hire us for the seal coat work. And then just digging deeper into it, then you can see expenses on each individual road. So you can kind of see in snapshot in time what we spend that year on those roads. So if you get a call and say you're now spending any money on it, you could look it up and see what we actually spent on that road. So so you do have this in your packet. I mean, if you want to save it, some of past commissioners like to have hard copies too if you want our copies on that.
I think we all got it.
We got it.
Oh, you did get them. Okay.
This is online too, correct? We should probably have it, the whole thing online for.
I think we have posted that pass one online.
So if any, any townships or anyone wants to review specifics, because it does have a wealth of information.
I, I have one, just one question. I noticed some of the townships and municipalities hadn't finished all their payments by the end of the year. Is that, is that probably done by now or probably?
Yeah. It's kind of just that snap.
Yeah, no, I know. And I know it's to the December. So I was curious. Yeah. So. Yeah. Yeah. So I kind of figured, yeah.
But all this work and effort, most of this is done by our accountant, Angela here. So she deserves a lot of accolades for this. And, and then the work that goes into performing this, you know, all the, our employees do, do a great job. So I guess, all I, I guess a motion just accepted is just probably all we really need. It's nothing formal, but it's required by statutes. And then at least that way it's kind of recorded.
Okay.
Move to approve the annual report.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Richard to accept, accept the right, accept the 22 annual Becker County Highway Department report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And I want to stress to Angie that a big thank you because I don't know how, I mean, those of us that don't do a lot of accounting, don't understand the in-depths of this. But it, it's a high stress timed when you have to finish this. And I, and I've been made aware how, how crunch time it is to get this in, to get this done and, and all the recording. We're all aware what the state, state and feds require on reporting of these projects with their monies. It is a very large task. So thank you and those that have assisted you and, and your, your office for completing this.
You know, just a comment after being involved in this for a couple of years in my past career, it does take a whole, not only Jim, Angie, Jonah, Brian, the whole crew, compile a lot of information, bring it forward. So it's a lot of work up for all of them. Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I, I know from even past people working on it, it's, it's a stressful time. And I know just like the accountant said, April 15th, once that's over, it's like, whoo, I can relax a little. So thanks again.
Thank you.
Jim, did you get an update on the WeFest contract?
Yes, that was incorporated into the conditional use permit. Jonah says that. So.
The charges are right in there?
Yeah. Evidently that was incorporated last year was according to Jonah.
I'm checking that. I didn't see anything in the conditional use as far as.
Are you looking as far as what we have?
What you charge.
Charged. Okay.
Because that's usually a separate contract, same as the sheriff's one or highway with all the additional signing and stuff they do.
Okay. I'll double check with Kyle on that. Yep.
We could make county signs that say WeFest on them and then sell them at the, could have a vendor license on there.
Yeah, there's a lot of signage that WeFest they scare themselves. But then there's a lot of other stuff that rigatory. Yeah, there's a lot of signage that WeFest they scare themselves, but then there's a lot of other stuff that, regulatory signs that they can't.
Yeah.
That's where Highway has to do.
Gotcha.
Highway has to do. Probably a daily inspection of those signs too and make sure that they're in place and right.
All right.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, before we adjourn, we want to, um, Administrator Omen presented us with what the city of Detroit Lakes has for their, their. What is it, marijuana usage or cannabis?
Ordinance.
Ordinance. Um, just looking at it, uh. Some, this is the city of Detroit Lakes, it is unlawful to use cannabis flower products, lower potency hems, edibles, hemp-derived consumer products as defined in Minnesota statute three forty-two oh one in public places. Anywhere in the city, as used in section, as used, as used in this section, public places include all the areas containing within the city boundaries except private residents, including the cur-. Curtilage and yard, private probably not generally accessible by the public unless the person is explicitly prohibited. Uh, violation of the sections, a petty misdemeanor as defined, so it would be quite easy to put county into the city.
Yeah.
If I make, if she Nelson, I I talked to the county sheriff at break and he certainly endorse, although he hasn't seen this yet, I did email it to all of you, including the sheriff. He would very much like something that was in line with the city of Detroit Lakes, uh, in ordinance.
Do we have to have a hearing on this, or?
I think we will.
Just discuss.
That, that, but I think this, if if, um, I think we can discuss it. At our next meeting and and put it on the agenda for maybe if we need a hearing, are we acceptable to look at this at our next meeting as, even if we have a public hearing, a first public hearing, there's probably going to be two, I would assume.
The city usually has two readings of theirs, but I don't know, do we have to do that or not?
Yeah, we'll look in the, if I make, she does, we'll look into the process of it, um, I think, I think just hearing from the board that you're acceptable, this type of format. I'll speak with Kyle here this afternoon and we'll get a timetable set up and if you look at it, they're not officially adopting theirs till the eighth of August and so they're.
That's probably, that's their meeting.
Yeah, it has first reading and second reading, the second reading is August eighth, so.
And it looks like they had publication, but maybe they have different.
They do, yeah.
Well, with the consensus of the board, will we move forward with something similar to this with county?
I would agree.
And start it at our next meeting.
Can we, can we just make a blanket one, like on the first, before we have public meetings, can we do that?
We'll put, if I could, Commissioner, so we'll, we'll put a process out to you in an email, um, I'll speak with Kyle here this afternoon.
I think the key is just getting it started at our next meeting, whatever, is what our consensus feels. Okay, nothing else?
Nope.
Meeting is adjourned, we'll move into our work session.